And walked home, ate a bowl of pasta, and here I am.
You walked up from the train station home? That's pretty good.
I did. I did. I did. Yeah. Yes. But I literally, I had to run down Thirty Third Street to train, so. That's why when you asked me about the, you know, meeting, doing in-person meetings, I was like, uh, I'm in the office every day and on the subway almost every day, so I sort of, being with you guys is, is
Safe. It's safer than that, yeah. Yeah. That's for sure.
A lot of comments.
Thank everybody.
Hi, Dan.
When I was switching into my white shirt and tie, I walked by the mirror in our bathroom and I said to myself, what would happen if I just showed up with my undershirt on, you know? Said, hey, it's time for the meeting, you know? Let's have a little meeting here. It's Jersey time, you know? And then I said, well, I might offend some people if I did that, so. I did.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
We might ask you to go back to your wife if you do that.
That's right. Yeah. So how are we doing? We have seven thirty-one. How are we doing with our participants? We have two that are excused for tonight, Jay Brinkerhoff and, let's see, Bob Ashman.
Correct. We're just waiting for Jennifer and Paul.
Okay, Bob is traveling to Chicago and Jay to Saint, going to Seattle. I have my mug here, which I got as a Christmas present. I don't know if anybody watches this show occasionally on TV, but it's ancient aliens. And I joke with my family about the aliens are here, you know, and they're hiding somewhere in the ocean or whatever.
I have met a few, I think.
Yeah.
You know, we are being recorded.
I'm related to some, yeah.
Being the wonderful father I am, I told my kids at a young age that the aliens were under their bed, so, you know, it's all my fault. However, they turned out, it's my fault.
The therapy bill, certainly.
Yeah, it's helped over the years. It has helped. I'm getting better. So this old Peter Sellers movie, where he's in an insane asylum and he has to repeat, the Chief Inspector Dreyfus, who was put in the asylum asylum, has to repeat to himself, I'm getting better every day and in every way I'm getting better and better, and just kind of repeat himself, repeat it. Of course, it'll make it happen if you keep repeating it.
Until you meet Cluso again.
That's right. Yeah.
Hey, everybody. Sorry I'm late there.
Okay. And maybe wait just a little bit more for Jennifer and then if not, we'll get started. And tonight, Chris, we don't have a, we have a recording as in, you know, electronic, but not a court reporter, correct?
Correct. Bridgette has the night off since.
Well, we may start getting a bad reputation among court reporters if we, you know, have meetings that last eleven thirty every night. All right, maybe we should, it's almost three, five minutes later, maybe we should start. Chris, what do you think?
We have eight members. We can certainly start.
Yes, it's not like we have some testimony tonight that's particularly significant at this point, so. I wanted to, let's see here, get the right text for my, my speech here. I think I'd have this memorized by now. All right, so let's call a meeting to order, meeting of Summit Planning Board. I'll read the adequate notice statement. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the board in preparation of the two thousand twenty-one annual meeting notice, which sets forth the date, time and place of this meeting by properly posting such notice and forwarding the notice to those designated newspapers and persons requesting meeting notices. Moreover, in order to comply with the National State Decrations of Emergency related to the COVID nineteen pandemic and in accordance with the municipal land use law, the Open Public Meetings Act and the urgency, emergency remote meeting protocols for local public bodies as set forth in NJAC five, colon, thirty-nine dash one, this meeting is being held virtually on a web-based platform with remote public access. This is a good piece to read if you're taking a public speaking course. All right, so we have minutes. We need a roll call, Chris. We do a roll call tonight.
Um, yeah, were we still doing Pledge of Allegiance, Bill?
Uh, yes, we, let's do that because now I have, I have my flag behind, so we'll stand up and do the pledge of allegiance. I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Yeah, I got my flag back. That's really great. All right, so meeting minutes. We'll do a roll call and then go to meeting minutes.
Sure. Chairman Anderson.
Present.
Vice Chairman Brinkerhoff is excused. Councilmember Little.
Here.
Ms. Bolson Alvarez, we're expecting, but not present yet. Ms. McNeil.
Here.
Mrs. Dory.
Here.
Mr. Zucker.
Here.
Corolla.
Here.
Fiori.
Here.
For Machelli.
Present. Here.
And Mr. Ashman is excused and Ms. Wolf is here. She's our board attorney and you have a quorum. You can proceed.
Thanks very much. All right. So we had a public hearing scheduled for Beechwood at Summit LLC and they've requested that be carried, so that hearing can be heard Monday night, June twenty-eighth at seven thirty PM. And we received notice from your attorney several days ago that they wish to be carried forward, so that's what we'll do with that. We have a referral here on a pending ordinance from council. I know you're all familiar with this. I thought maybe it'd be a good idea for Ms. Wolf to give us a little bit of an introduction and then after that, councilperson Little, I'd like to call her to give us a little bit of the history, you know, with regard to this ordinance.
Sure. So basically, anytime a land use or land development ordinance is adopted, it would come before the planning board to give a finding as whether it is consistent or not inconsistent, double negative, it's very annoying, I know, with the master plan or any other portion of it. So we do have a memo from our board planner and I would just note that this is not necessarily the public hearing on the ordinance. That is before the governing body. This is just the hearing on whether it is inconsistent, not inconsistent with the master plan. So technically, we don't have to open it to members of the public, but if the board chair wishes to do so, we can.
I think this is pretty fully heard by the, by the council and at this point, I think we wouldn't open it to public comment. Also, Tom Behrens is here, who is our board planner. And so after councilmember Little speaks, maybe Tom, you could kind of walk us through the memo that you prepared for us tonight. All right, councilmember Little.
Do you want me to go ahead, Bill?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, if you give us a little background.
The council, yeah, the council has introduced this ordinance and it looks like my internet's unstable. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, um, it's the, when the legislation was passed by the, by, at the state level, they required municipalities to either opt in or out of the, of sale of recreational marijuana. And if you don't opt out at this point, you're prohibited from doing so for a five-year period. So the council is still looking into whether or not we would, we would want to have any type of of sale of marijuana in the town and how that would be accomplished, but we weren't ready to make a decision one way or the other yet. And so we are passing this ordinance to prohibit sale right now so that we aren't forced out of this, into this five-year window.
Beth, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So what happens once, once the state issues regulations? Do we, we're still within that five-year window, right? But can we, I'm not saying we would, but just like, could we, if we decided, you know, we'll allow growers as, you know, just not, not retail, but maybe we would allow a grower or something like that? Can we do that?
So it's my understanding that we could back in, but we can opt out during the five.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
Yes.
And that medical marijuana is of course allowed also.
Right, as is delivery services, but they can't be located in Summit, but they can be delivering to Summit.
To Summit, right.
Thanks, thanks, Ms. Wolf.
And so I apologize, just one of the, so, so we've, of those, I mean, there are six categories, but really it breaks down to four. So we're opting out of all of it, including cultivator and manufacturer. Do we, I'm not saying, again, I'm not saying we should. I just wanted to clarify. Do, if we wanted to, would we have the option to opt into cultivator and manufacturer without retail or wholesale?
I believe, I believe that's correct, but maybe Attorney Wolf can tell me whether I.
Yes, that's correct. And we can also hear used variances if the board were inclined to do that, do so. So even if we're prohibiting it, we could still allow certain applications.
So if we had some type of greenhouse business or something where there, where there was benefit to the city potentially monetarily, without actually having a retail shop or a distribution, we could look at that?
Yes, we could definitely tailor our ordinance to address the township's or the city's needs.
Thank you.
Tom, you want to walk us through the, the memo you prepared, which I thought was very helpful and very thorough?
Yes, I will. So I, I think the board, you know, understands the ordinance, why we're here and what its duty is in fulfilling this master plan consistency review. So to assist with that, we took a look at the relevant master plan goals, objectives and policies, and that included a review of the city's two thousand master plan as well as its two thousand sixteen master plan reexamination report. And so I'll just go through a few of those provisions and I think this vision statement from the two thousand master plan sort of captures the, the essence of Summit's planning in a nutshell. And so I'll just read that. Summit is a small residential city that seeks to maintain a high quality of life for all of its residents, manage an appropriate balance between and among residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, recreational uses and public open space, and provide carefully articulated land use regulations for the development and redevelopment of all of these vital community components. So without reading all of the, the applicable goals, objectives and policies that are enumerated in the the report, I would say there are several themes within that statement, and one includes the preservation of the city's residential and commercial character as well as the quality of life for residents and visitors. There is also the, the need to balance both new and existing land uses and make sure that they're compatible with one another. And the other is recognizing the city as a major regional economic and transportation hub and to encourage investment and job growth within the city. So you have these somewhat complementary goals and they, that can also be contradictory at times. So many municipalities at this point have taken the stance that because they don't have the specific regulations related to the recreational marijuana legislation, that they're waiting to at least see what happens before they approve some of it or all of it, or continue to maintain their position that it shall all be prohibited until some further time. So in that respect, the prohibition can be viewed as temporary until at least that those regulations are formally enacted or adopted. And so the board is now charged with looking at these various master plan components and determining at this point in time with the information that it has, whether or not this ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan and its various provisions.
Thanks, Tom. Any members of the board have questions for either Ms. Wolf or Mr. Behrens? Let, also let the record reflect that Ms. Bolson Alvarez is here with us.
I was here just on my phone. I was having some technical difficulties. Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask one point of clarification.
Oh, yeah.
So if I understand, if we, if we don't opt out, these activities are permitted in any zone? Is it a free-for-all?
Well, Amanda, maybe, my understanding is that they would be permitted, essentially.
Would be permitted. I think there's a restriction on whether they would be permitted in the commercial districts versus industrial districts versus the downtown.
The commercial, industrial, yeah.
Right. I'm not sure you could have, let's say, a manufacturing facility in, you know, a residential zone, let's say, you know, single-family residential zones. So there may be certain restrictions there. But I think it would be that if there's a retail operator that wants to operate in a zone that permits retail, that they would just be able to open up shop.
It can't be new schools and stuff, can they?
I don't know that that's prohibited per se. Here's the language.
Legal.
Here's the language from the act. It says, the failure to enact some sort of ordinance shall mean that for a period of five years thereafter, the growing, cultivating, manufacturing, selling and reselling of cannabis and cannabis items shall be permitted uses in all industrial zones and the retail selling of cannabis items to consumers shall be a conditional use in all commercial retail zones. So that's the differentiation.
All right. But it, all right, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily allow us to have carefully articulated land use regulations until, because it would be a little bit of a free-for-all in those zones.
Correct.
So I understand it. Okay.
So any other questions? Your attorney, Mr. Behrens?
I would just ask Mr. Behrens what his professional planning opinion would be as to whether or not it is not inconsistent.
Put me on the spot here, Amanda.
Sorry.
In light of the information at hand, I, I think, and, and based on the, the recommendation of the League of Municipalities, which is recommending that all municipalities take this approach and prohibit the uses until further regulations are available, that I think it makes sense for the board to determine that the ordinance is not inconsistent at the very least with the master plan.
And I'll say that almost all of our towns that are doing this have done the same exact ordinance. It's actually kind of a form ordinance and it bothers me because I spelled distributor wrong. And then, so I always point that out so that we can be one of the towns that actually spelled distributor correctly.
Yes.
But other than that, it's basically a form ordinance.
Next. Well, I went to Brayton School. We, we want to make sure we spell everything correct.
That's right.
So, okay, that's great. Any other questions? If not, can I ask someone at the board to make a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And council, Mr. Secretary, Chris, can you do a roll call motion?
Yeah, before we do, I just want to note that there is one hand raised in the public. I don't know if we're taking.
No, we're not, we're not taking questions from the public tonight. This is an ordinance that's already been through a public approval process and this is simply a matter of determining whether this is consistent with the master plan or not inconsistent with the master plan, and we have done that.
And members of the public will be able to appear at the, I guess it's the June first council meeting if they have any comments or questions as well.
Good, great.
All right, in that case, we have a motion in a second. So Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Dory?
Yes.
Zucker?
Yes.
Corolla?
Yes.
Fiori?
Yes.
And Mr. For Machelli?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. I neglected to go over the meeting minutes, so I skipped to this quickly. So if it's okay with you, Chris, we'll go back to meeting minutes and ask if anyone has, this is meeting minutes from the April twenty-sixth meeting. If anyone has any comments, questions, additions, deletions to the minutes?
Mr. Chip, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, John.
Oh, thanks, Rich. Mr. Chairman, on, on the, I just had one thought on these minutes on the forty-three woodland.
Yeah.
It's going to the last paragraph. It's actually the second to last sentence. It says, after discussion, well, I'll go to the third to last. It said, the board also discussed banking parking spots in the southern lot and only constructing them if needed. After discussion, the applicant agreed to bank parking spaces in the southern lot and returned back to the board should they need to be constructed. I think that, my memory of that discussion would be that the applicant offered to bank parking spaces, but I, I, I don't think the word agreed is appropriate because I don't think there was offered agreement from the board. I don't think the board was clearly offering banking as, as, as a solution. It was discussed, but we kind of, I, by my memory, we kind of just moved through it.
You're right, John. And they also, after the break, came back and said, we're not going to offer to bank now. We're going to go survey the tenants.
Great. Good catch. Thanks. Thanks, both of you. Thanks.
But do we want the whole sentence just taken out at this point, or do we just want a different word for agreed?
I just want to say that it was discussed, but not discussed, but not, but not agreed upon in that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably discussed.
Yeah, that's good.
You could say they were not disinclined to it. The record did reflect they were not disinclined to doing it. They don't want to come back before us and say, hey, hey, you mischaracterized what we said, but we never agreed to it, that's for sure.
I think that's good. Good point. Any other comments?
I had just one on the, which paragraph would this be? The third paragraph, second page on the top, second to the last line where it says, much closer to compliance with their onsite parking requirement? I don't believe there is a requirement. They're, they're, they're asking for these spaces, but it's not tied to any specific requirement that they're obligated to.
I guess if you rent by the ordinance and looked at their current building and maybe it was a new building, Rich?
Right.
You need to have X number of parking spaces, but I guess given that they're grandfathered, they don't have
Right.
requirements at this point, right?
Right, because they would have, if they were in compliance, they would only have fifty-six resident, or forty-six residences.
Right. So that was a statement. I know that they made that, as I recall, they made that statement, but it maybe is kind of a nonsensical statement from that perspective.
I think I just wanted to flag it. I don't know how appropriately address it, but I didn't, I didn't want to go to the next meeting, you know, with them, just with the understanding there was any type of formal requirement by the city. They're asking for, for relief here that, you know, that's different.
So maybe we just strike that sentence. That seems to me the most expeditious way to deal with that and, and the most accurate way to deal with it.
Yes.
Okay, I would suggest that. I do have one comment, question, Chris. Does anybody else have any comments, questions? Sorry. On the first, first paragraph, the last sentence in the first paragraph, again, on forty-three woodland, Mr. Mayner stated that while a building coverage variance would still be required, the coverage would be significantly reduced. So are we really talking about building coverage here? Are we talking about lot coverage or impervious coverage here?
So the building coverage he was referencing would improve, the lot coverage would go up. So we can, we can distinguish that and add lot coverage if you'd like to.
Yeah. Just make that, yeah, just make that a little clearer.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? It's very, very well done. Okay, so I guess we need a, a motion to approve and a second?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right, on favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. The, and Bill, did we formally carry forty-three woodland? I just wanted to.
We talked about it, but do we do, neither form, it's not something you do to vote for, is it? Or is it just something we?
We announce it.
Yeah.
It will be, yeah, it will be heard on June twenty-eighth without further notice, same place, same virtual style meeting.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Amanda. So the one thing that I, I wanted to just touch on briefly, but not spend much time on, I called as many board members as I could prior to the meeting tonight to just talk about the idea perhaps whether we might go back to the council chambers. As I understand, council is going to have their first in, in-building meeting on June first. And I know that there's some format issues and some concerns that Mr. Warner has, Ms. Wolf, with regard to running a hybrid process versus a non-Zoom component to the meeting. In other words, just a regular in-person meeting. So I think that needs to be worked out, as I understand it, Chris, between the councils, Mr. Warner and the council, the council attorney are discussing that. So I think that's something that needs to be worked out. I heard from a number of you, I spoke to you a number of you tonight, and so we're just sort of trying to gather facts and get a sense of sort of what the process is and what, what the general feeling of, of the board members is at this point. And I think we need to learn more about, you know, the conditions in that room with terms of air exchanges and other kinds of things, how to, how to handle people who are vaccinated and who are not. And also, if we had another situation like Primrose, where we might have a hundred people who want to speak, to have them in the council chambers or outside the council chambers might be a management problem. So I'm just mentioning it to you to let you know that it's being talked about, being discussed. No decisions have been made. No conclusions, just sort of gathering facts and information to sort of see where we might be headed with this. And and I'll ask Chris and Matt, since you are in City Hall and, and councilmember Little, if you have anything to add to the, to the conversation with regard to this issue?
No, Bill, I think you did a great job, you know. I think, you know, Steve, I'm going to try and facilitate a phone call with Steve and, you know, city solicitor and try and figure out, you know, where we land with everything.
Ms. Wolf, are you seeing other communities, planning boards in particular? How are they grappling with this issue?
A lot of them, it depends on the technology. So we have like three towns that have been hybrid for many months now, but then we have a few towns that are just starting to say, okay, we're going to open in July, July or August.
Okay.
So it's just, I guess it's a slow process.
All right.
If, if I can add, there is.
Go ahead, Tom.
Sorry, my internet just, if I could add, I was in another meeting today and there is a caveat to all this, that as soon as the executive order is lifted, all meetings must be in person. You could still have a virtual element where a consultant or somebody can chime in virtually, but the meeting in general has to be hosted in person.
So this is what we're expecting to have in the next week or so from the governor, or is this?
Depends who you ask. I don't, I don't know. I don't have that information, but.
Yeah, Chris?
I thought they said May twenty-eighth, the mask mandate was lifted.
Friday.
I think you're right about that, Ellen. And if it's not that, it's June one. It's something. Well, there's the mask mandate, but then there's the, the overall, the overarching executive order that, you know, created the sort of emergency protocol in the first place. So I do not have those specifics.
Well, that sounds like it's different than the mask mandate.
I believe it would be.
City Hall is reopening for business on June first and City Hall is prepared to take the public obviously in address, so we're prepared at City Hall, but it would certainly, I serve at the pleasure of the mayor and council and so whatever, everyone else decides, just me personally, I would be fine with, but City Hall is opening on June first.
Okay. Now, so is it someone comes in, they, they don't have to wear a mask to come into City Hall as of June first or after June first?
With regards to mask wearing by the public, by then, the mask mandate will have been lifted by the governor for indoor. I do believe in Councilwoman Little. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know local municipalities can get more strict than the state, but you can't get less strict. So I'm not a hundred percent. Councilwoman Little, do you know?
I believe that we have to follow the executive orders. The very, in the very first executive order that the governor issued, he said that municipalities could not do anything, you know, do anything that contramands or is different than the executive orders that are by the governor. So I think we need to follow those. So that would be, so we would follow the guidance and the public health guidance, but you know, that there's, there's other concerns and, and there's other ways that, you know, we can, we can follow the guidance, but still make things safe. So, you know, we, we may, we may have people wait in the lobby or, you know, do other things that still make, make everyone comfortable and make sure that we're following public health guidance.
Okay, great. All right. So that's just a sort of update, sort of stay tuned. We're kind of struggling, wrestling with this right now and we'll let everybody kind of know where we're, where we're headed with it. It may not be June, it may be July or August, who knows, but we're thinking about it. All right, I don't see that we have any more business, Chris. We have any more business before the board tonight?
Hello, are there anything in the subcommittees, like, I know that we've got something before the historic preservation that Beth and Jennifer, I've worked on that we're waiting for their comments, is there anything like on the Broadway West or any, I mean, I know we have a bunch of subcommittees, is there anything that we haven't been able to address and look at while we've been doing Primrose and Primrose?
So, yeah, Jennifer, yep.
Quick update, um, the HPC gave me comments, we have a couple of little edits and I needed to bring it to Beth and Andy and I haven't done it, and then we can bring it to you guys. Minor, minor edits.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. Broad Street West, maybe?
Well, Broad Street West, um, Jay and I are both on that, we had that, a meeting, uh, Zoom meeting on May twentieth, which I thought, the last two and a half hours, I thought was very productive, we had excellent, um, uh, comments from the public, which I thought were very right on, um, the developers I thought did a good job, it's been a tremendous amount of effort put into it. Um, we've had a financial consultant look at the, uh, at the options that have been presented and they're beginning to sort of look at the numbers now, uh, and beginning to start that negotiation with the, with the developer. So, um, I think it was a very productive meeting, uh, the more, more meetings to come, but right now, as I understand it, the developers, um, taking in the comments that he receives, uh, as the state staff as well, all of us taking the comments we've received and sort of processing them.
Right, Bill, who's the developer again?
Uh, it's a combination between L and M and Toll Brothers, it's a joint venture that they put together. Uh, and L and M has a sort of a broader master planning responsibility, more of also dealing with, with all, uh, the, uh, retail, uh, commercial side of things, where Toll has the stronger presence in the residential side of things. So, uh, I think it's coming along pretty nicely, but, but the, the, the meeting we had, uh, Zoom meeting we had Monday, uh, Tuesday, twentieth, whatever day that was, I thought was very.
Thursday.
Yeah, very effective, yeah, thanks. But, alright.
Bill?
Hey, Bill.
Yeah.
Um, how long are they taking comments, I understand, uh, that they have, uh, I guess it's an email, it's, uh, Broad Street West, B S W at citysummit.org, how long are they taking comments and?
Uh, you know, I would, I don't know the answer directly, but I would think within the next several weeks, there's to be taking comments because there's still quite a bit of things, uh, you know, that they're working on, it's not, you know, a hundred percent cast in stone, so they're, you know, they have to look at a number of, of the comments that they've gotten and think them through, so I would think a week or two easily, since you could send in comments.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, and if you don't know the answer now, that's fine, but what's the process at this point?
Well, I mean, the process is, um, right, and there's a couple of steps that have to be completed in addition to the public input, there's a development agreement that has to be put together, uh, that has to be negotiated, and, um, part of that process is the analysis, the financial analysis has really just begun a few weeks ago, uh, so that we kind of have a better understanding of what the cost of the public goods that are being proposed and fundamentally, what can the developer, given what the plan indicates and what the public has asked for, what can the developer effectively afford to pay for the fire station and for the other sites in town? That process is, is being, you know, going through right now, so it's up in the air. And, you know, after that, well, I think they'll come back and for some perhaps design changes, come back for another public presentation, which would probably be September. And Councilmember Little, if you have a better sense of that, you certainly can, can let us know, but I think the next presentation would be a month or two away.
And then the development, sorry.
Sorry.
I think, I think that's pretty good timeline, of course, it can, you know, it can always change and we will continue to engage with the developer and, you know, bring them comments that we're hearing from the public and see if there are any changes to be made. And then we'll be simultaneously looking at all the financials, we've, the city's retained a financial advisor, um, who's working with us, uh, to go over the financials and, and advise us on, on, um, you know, diff, not only the price points for the properties, but, you know, whether sales or leases or different, in different financing models make sense, so we're, we're going to continue that process as well.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Well, I hate to ask this question, but would someone be willing to make a motion to adjourn, I know it's early, but, um, be, be bold and if you're willing to make a motion to, uh, adjourn, someone just might second it.
So moved.
And a second? Okay, great, well, thank you all very much, it's, uh, great to see you all again and, uh.
Have a good night.
Nice having a short meeting, we'll see you next month, thanks a lot.